To record the meeting.
I would like to.
While we are conducting town business using remote participation via Zoom, we ask that those of you not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion of the moment, please mute your microphone to avoid interruptions outside the conversation.
Thank you, Marshall. Kevin, it looks like from our earlier discussion that a number of these items on the agenda were taken care of on Monday. So does it look like the only item, or actually two items that we're going to discuss is ARPA, an update, and also discussion of adding a working session next week? Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, that is correct. Hi, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're all right.
Why don't we get the quick one out of the way then, the working session, adding that onto the schedule? So Kevin, if you just wanted to speak to that, what you were thinking for the discussion of the budget?
Absolutely. So I mentioned the end of last meeting. Due to the timing, this work session moving up to Wednesday from Thursday, and the budget being sent out by the end of the day tomorrow is still on schedule. I actually came right from Captain's office into this meeting because they're hard at work, sleeves rolled up. And just from a timing standpoint, we're going to absolutely get it to you before the end of the week so that you get, there can be some review time. We have a work session planned on the 19th, but as of this time, that will be the only one after the submission of the budget for us to get together. So the intent would be to have a second and possibly if needed, a third, hopefully not. But if we need it, we'll have some time hopefully to put one on if we need to. So the thought was next week, and I know there might be some conflict scheduled, but next week, starting to work through the budget, the first version of the omnibus that we'll be presenting this week to you folks, and bring in some of the departments to start discussing the police, the fire, DPW, for example, would be the ones that I would probably have first in line, bigger budgets for review. And then as a group, we could discuss it. If we have next week's meeting, we can discuss what other departments we want to make sure we have for the next meeting. If it's everybody, that's fine. If there's certain ones we want to bring in, that's fine, too. So that was sort of the thought process from a schedule standpoint. And I certainly wanted to have this discussion with you folks, with everyone tonight to see if that might make sense and availability to do so.
Okay, so you're thinking next Wednesday, the 12th at 5:00, continuing with our format of Wednesdays at 5:00?
That would work for myself.
It's fine with me.
Okay, how does that work for everyone else?
I have a conflict on that. I can't make that one.
Is it at that time or that day, Dick?
I'm traveling then, yes. On that day. I also mentioned on Monday that I didn't realize it when we moved to the Wednesday from Thursday, but I wound up having a conflict on that meeting on the 19th also.
Okay. Do we want to attempt to move it to a Tuesday? I know we don't have too many times when we get together to discuss the budget.
I can make next Tuesday instead of next Wednesday, yes. Instead of the 12th, the 11th?
Yes, the 12th, yeah. Would the 11th work for everybody? Marshall Boyd, Cam?
Well, I go ahead.
I'm sorry, Cam.
I haven't talked yet. I'm still breathing deeply. Well, here, let me just tell you, the 11th would work. All right, so I have a meeting in Boston from 4:00 to 5:00. Obviously, I've done this before where I've been in my car, or if we said 6:00 or even 7:00 on the 11th, that would work much better for me, but so.
How about next Monday instead of Tuesday? We don't have a meeting on Monday, so.
We do have a very important Celtics game to attend.
But it depends on how early we start. One thing that we have done when we've done the budgets is to actually work a little sooner because some of the people in the office can come in and that, but I understand Cam has a real job and you have a real job, Marshall, so that it may not work, but if.
Actually, Dick, I'm better doing it a little bit earlier on Monday, the 10th. In fact, I can do Monday, the 10th after 2:30. I was gonna say, if Monday, the 10th, we did it at like, at 4:00, that gives me time to get home, do a meeting, and then leave again in time to make the Celtics game, assuming we keep it two hours. I could do 4:00 and same thing. There's a chance I'm doing this from the road as well, but in a hotel room type thing. But middle of the day, or as Marshall said, 4:00, yeah, that's a little bit of a press, but yeah.
Okay, and Boyd, does that work for you?
Being an ugly old retired guy, I can do it almost anytime anybody.
Don't forget to crepit, Boyd. That's the other one, too. You used it, not me. You said it.
Okay, so it looks like the 10th at 4:00 would work. Do we want to try next week as well because Dick has a conflict?
All of this, all of this for gant, all of this for gant, isn't it?
I wouldn't change it just because of me. I apologize.
No, it's no problem, Dick. We have conflicts coming, so. So how about January 17th at 4:00 as well instead of the 19th?
I can't say for sure. I'm supposed to be in New York.
Okay.
Martin Luther King Day, just saying, throwing it out there.
I may have trouble on, I may have trouble on the 17th because I'm having eye surgery, I think, in the morning. So I don't know what kind of condition I'll be in.
Okay, how about the 18th?
Yeah, probably okay.
Is that all right? Cam, would you still be in New York?
I'm gonna be probably the whole week, but that doesn't mean I can't get to a hotel room type thing. So right now, we're currently scheduled on Wednesday, the 19th at 5:00. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, so the question is, can we move it from till Tuesday?
Yeah, to Tuesday at 4:00?
I, I'll say yes. Yeah, I'll say yes.
Kevin, did you seem concerned?
I apologize. This is one of the very few times I might not be available. My oldest has surgery scheduled, actually 2:30 that day. My six, so I'm probably be in Boston at Children's, so I could probably get back before, but if it was a little bit.
Oh, no. Don't worry about it, Kevin. That's, that's too much. Dick, on the 19th, is there any time that's, that works for you? Or is that whole day bad?
The day is pretty much gone. I'm traveling or in the air or something like that, yeah.
Okay. All right, and Thursdays, Marshall, that's bad for you, right?
That is my actual first day of teaching, so.
Okay. All right.
So we just can't do everybody, I understand, and I apologize for not having picked that up when it was first said.
I mean, though, again, actually going back to Thursday, I mean, if we do it earlier in the day. So what does that mean? What do you mean by earlier? Well, because I, classes at 6:00, I'm not leaving Boston, I'm generally done with work at 3:30. So if I just went and sat in a different part of the studio at 3:30. Yeah, I could, I could. How long, how long should I block for this, guys?
Kevin, what, two hours to be saying?
It depends how much of the departments we're going to be seeing at each meeting. And, you know, I would say there's nothing really atypical about this budget than the last two. And I know for myself, I'm more comfortable this year than I have in prior two years, so hopefully be able, maybe even more efficient from that perspective, so.
I would, I'm sorry, I know you were about to actually answer the question when I interrupted, except that I would say on the 20th, if at all possible, we could massage that into being one of the slightly shorter versions of all of these series of meetings we're going to do. Because I do have to get from one part of Boston to another, and again, it being the first class, I probably want to give my some time to prepare.
How about a 3:30 to 5:00?
Yeah.
Would that work for everyone?
Yep.
Okay.
Does that sound okay, Kevin?
That'd be great. I think staff would appreciate that, too, being during regular hours. That would be great.
Okay, so I have a motion then for adding to the working schedule, January 10th at 4:00 and January 20th, 3:30 to 5:00.
So what's going to move?
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay, I'm going to roll call Mr. Hook.
Hi.
Mr. Brown.
Hi.
Mr. Jackson.
Hi. One question, that January 20th is 3:30 to 5:00?
Yes. Yeah, and Miss Grant? Okay, and Miss Vermees is I, so it passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for your flexibility on this, and have good luck with the surgery.
Yeah, were we moving a different one as well?
We, we did two changes. We added the 10th and we, actually, please, we put it in motion. We modified the 19th to be the 20th.
I'm sorry. I technically moved it, yet I missed it, so there you go. 19th deleted, okay.
One other thought would be, too, is depending on how much we're able to accomplish on the 20th and on the 10th, if there's a need, we do have, based on the schedule as presented right now, we will have that last week of January, the 24th, the week of 24th, ahead of the first week of February, which we're targeting for hopefully getting to a good place with it. So we don't have to make any motion now, can see how the next two meetings go, but just for kind of planting that seed and for consideration, that might be a time we could use as well if we need another day.
Okay.
Both, both of those meetings are basically budget discussions, right?
Yeah, we'll keep it a budget.
I got an important question from Marshall. Are you working the Celtics game or are you spectating?
Oh, no, I bought a mini season ticket package. Five games into my 10-game package, the Celtics are 0-5 in the 5-game. I hope you don't, if you're a betting man or woman, put your money on Indiana next week. As long as, Lynn, excuse me, as long as we're talking about scheduling, do we have anything scheduled for Monday, the 31st currently?
No.
Or how about Thursday, the 3rd? Well, it would be Wednesday, the. Oh, no, I mean, it'll be February 3rd.
Will we change all the Thursdays, Cam, over to Wednesdays?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Gone for February 2nd right now. We do have a working session at 5:00.
Okay, I'm sketchy on, I may not make that. I think I'm in the air for that session.
All right, as we get closer to it, if we need to adjust to talk about it.
Okay.
Okay, great. So Kevin, I guess I'll, we can turn it over to you to give us an update on the ARPA monies?
Yes, thank you. So as Madam Chair, as you said at the top of the meeting, with the turnaround Monday to Wednesday and a number of contracts and different items on Monday's agenda, we did have some placeholders for tonight. It was, it was great that we were able to get through them on Monday, so we'll down to the ARPA. Tent is, so we, one of the conversations our ARPA group's been having, and I'll talk about who that, the makeup of that and everything else, has been to come to the Select Board with a formal presentation. We're targeting, initially, we targeted today to be the day, but through the holidays, we, we said we're, we're actually possibly looking for maybe one of the upcoming work sessions to give an update on what that might look like with members of the ARPA team. I do see David Larson from the FinCom, who is a member of our ARPA team, is on the call today. So I'll give an overview, and David, please feel free, as a member of the team, to just provide any, anything I misspeak about or any details you want to fill in along the way. But the hope was, is, like I said, the team wanted to bring a presentation to you folks a little more formally than tonight about what we've been working on. So today was scheduled. We've had some time to meet, and I just wanted to give sort of a, an update, you know, a little more detail to you folks and be able to answer questions if there are any at this point in time, but there's still a lot of, we're still working through a lot of it, too. So what we've done is we've put together a really good working group. It's made up of the CARES Committee, the funding that we received from the state through federal means last year. It was made up of Catherine Gabriel, our town accountant, Sue Lemese, our assistant town accountant, Jen Collins-Brown, our fire chief, myself, and Donna Rich. And I think I've said it before, we received $584,000. We had about six months to spend it, seven months to spend it initially, and we spent down those funds in its entirety, or it was earmarked in its entirety by the end of last calendar year, so a year ago, which is the initial requirement. Two days before the expiration, they extended that to the end of this year. So a lot of communities weren't able to use the monies in amount of time initially allotted. So I think they had advocated and had a positive response from the federal government to extend the time they had to spend the money. Fortunately, we had some capacity now because while the communities are worrying about still spending their CARES, when ARPA became available, we were able to pivot over to the ARPA because we were able to clear up the CARES funding and use those monies and those funds. So our team, which I mentioned, the CARES team, we added, spoke with Che Elwell, the Chair of the Finance Committee, and we went to the Finance Committee and asked if there was any interest for a representative from the Finance Committee to be a part of these discussions that we're having around ARPA. Mr. Larson volunteered. He's been a really great participant and member of the team. And so the CARES team transitioned to ARPA, we added Mr. Larson, and we've started embarking conversations over the last few months around ARPA. ARPA funding is federally, federal monies that the town receive. Every community in, in the Commonwealth and the country received a, based on population, amount of monies to the community. Through the, the Act that was passed, TOPSIL received $1,985,000 to be spent, and with that, they provided us with some interim guidelines of how the monies can be spent. And there's a wide range of different types of opportunities from economic development, premium pay, immediate health-related needs, similar to what we use the CARES money for, mask, PPE, things of that nature, infrastructure, capital infrastructure, broadband. Those are some of the things that are, some of the many things that are allowed to be used these, these monies for. And we have some time with these monies that we've received. They do not need to be spent in the next year or six months, which we're grateful for because it's a lot of work, a lot of good work. But we have multiple years to, basically three years to spend it or have money earmarked for different types of projects to be spent. And so a number of communities taking different approaches of how they go through their processing and vetting. Lot, generally speaking, they're all very similar. There's a committee that's, that's formed, and they look through the guidelines, and they determine what's eligible, what's not eligible, and then they start prioritizing different types of projects to get receipt, they go out. Hopefully, out of the community, but this is our intent to go out to also solicit feedback from our board, the community, open houses are things we're talking about to get some feedback from people as well, so that we can have a really robust conversation and a really good list of different projects. One of the things that we realized through the CARES project was that different projects that we want to undertake, it was really, it was an accounting nightmare, to be honest with you, with $100 Zoom account and one order of mask today, another order of mask tomorrow, and trying to account for all the moving pieces. I mean, it was a nightmare. Our team's fantastic, and they worked through it and got it done and done right. We've got no issues with our accounting and reporting that we've had with the state. But it does take a lot of time and capacity. And so one of the things would be ARPA money, because it's a large pot of money, and the project, they've, the projects that they're allocating money towards, or they're recommending, or the guidance is saying is eligible for typically larger capital-type items. So we've sort of talked about, we haven't sort of, we have talked about using that money for just that larger infrastructure, get ahead of some of the projects that we know are on our capital plan, projects that we might not have necessarily thought of or would consider otherwise, but now that the funding's available and they might qualify under one of the categories, are those things that we want to consider possibly moving up? I know Mr. Larson's come up with some really creative ideas around economic development and ways we can partner with the community to try to invest monies back into the community, as an example, which is a whole nother thing when you start doing that with, from an organizational standpoint, reporting standpoint. But we're exploring all the different options that are on the table through the interim guidelines that we receive and the conversations our team's having right now. What we've done so far is we've sort of, we have, we have a list that we, it's an ongoing list, it's, it's a living document. It changes every time we meet and multiple times between meetings that are basically all of the different ideas that we've received from the department heads and staff, the ideas from our capital plan, ideas from members of the community have reached out to us, whether it was, say, an agricultural specific type item that we might want to include, or if it's an economic development type item we might want to include. And we're putting all those into a master list right now that's very rough and very raw, that changes. We, we're still even looking at these items to see if they're eligible or not. We haven't even gotten to that point, but step one is to put all, put them all on the table, and let's talk about them, let's see if they work. And then from there, once we have an understanding of what qualifies, what doesn't, let's start thinking about prioritization of those. But we're still, like I said, we're early in the process right now. And the other thing, too, is our team's keeping our eyes and ears open of what other communities are doing with their monies. We don't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel. There might be some really good ideas, creative ideas, innovative ideas that other communities are using their money for. That might be a good fit for TOPSIL, too. So along the way, we are working with our colleagues and other communities, talking about what they're doing for processes, but also what they're looking at for projects. And we're sharing some of the things that we're doing, just so there's an open dialogue, which has been really helpful. Also, I talked about some of the accounting requirements associated with this, and we've entered a cohort through MAPC. MAPC has hired Powers and Sullivan, who happens to be our new account, our new auditors as well, to be a consultant at a per diem rate to the different towns in the region. So if we have a question, if something's eligible, we have, we need some accounting support to actually process some of the paperwork properly, they'll be available to us as needed. Those costs associated, the administrative costs, those are covered by the ARPA monies. So the monies that we receive can actually pay for us to ensure that we're doing it the right way or have some, another group to help advise us as well. So we have some additional support that through those meets. You know, some of the things that we are talking about are those capital projects. Something more recently in our last meeting that we talked about was the public safety, public health component of it, because that's really the genesis of all this money, anyway. All these funds are available to us because of the pandemic. And what we've discussed recently with that, beyond just capital improvement projects, is looking at allocating a budgeting, a certain amount of money annually for the next few years, using ARPA money that can be available to our public health teams through our public health director. So if we need to buy sleeves for vaccination cards or, or more masks or other types of PPE, the smaller type items that are not capital, the health director will work with our accountant and our team to authorize those types of smaller purchases, just like we did with the CARES, the real-time need type products. The larger items, just by the nature of how our organization sets up, those will likely be greater than $25,000. And before we bring a contract to the board, we'll certainly be updating along the way the projects we think we're going to be moving and the priorities around those. So the, will be, the goal, the mission and, and the commitment is that there'll be an appropriate amount of communication and updates as we move through this process at certain periods when we have a better understanding of what we're doing and how we're doing it. Once we get more feedback from others and feedback from, from the board, we'll be consistently on a regular basis coming back to provide updates and just make sure our vision is aligned with your vision of how we want to ensure that we use these funds the most efficient and effective way possible. So I will stop there because that was probably a lot.
Kevin, do you have an idea of when that list would be available for us to take a look at? Just to get a general sense of what's on, you know, the potential plate here?
Sure. My hope, my, I couldn't commit to a certain date, say, at this point, Madam Chair. My, my thought is we have a meeting coming up next week on the 11th in the morning, that's our next ARPA meeting. And some of the work that's been done over the holidays since our last meeting in December should better vet sort of the items that are on the list. And we might get to a good place where we feel comfortable that it's, it's pretty comprehensive at this time. Again, it's kind of putting everything out there. We still want to make sure we're not putting anything that's clearly not going to be eligible. And that's some of the work that we're doing right now, the due diligence. But, you know, I don't want to, I would say within the next, you know, few weeks, likely, we might be in a better place after another meeting or two. But I think it could correspond nicely with the more formal presentation that we do plan at a future work session to provide, the ARPA team plans to provide.
Are there any thoughts, Kevin, that this money might help offset some of the capital requirements that we're putting forward for this year's budget?
Yeah, so there's a, one of the items that we were excited for is the fiber, and we talked about that actually on Monday, that we believe this is, very good chance this is going to be an eligible item for the Phase 2 and 3 of the fiber network. We also have some grant money for the fiber through the state, through their IT grant program that the regional effort, the regional communities are going to be applying for anyway. But that's, that's, that's an example of a capital item that's on our approved capitalists this year. We believe generators, police and the fire could likely be qualifying items as well. And there might, I think there might be one or two other ones that we're looking at to see if it could offset. We're also looking at some of the future costs as well, maybe not just this year, like, for instance, would a pumper, pumper truck, would that be something that we could put, you know, a couple hundred thousand of this to offset the cost in two or three years when that comes up on the capital plan? So we're forecasting out a little bit, too, so, so we know where some of those monies might go for other capital projects that might not be ripe this, this coming fiscal year.
And do the monies also pertain to the schools, Kevin? Can they be used with the schools, or is it that a different animal?
So I've had conversations with Dr. Morrison about our, our ARPA funds and finding if there's a need right now in the schools. The schools have ESTR funds, and they have a number of other grants that they've received. And at this time, we do not seem to be an indication that they were looking for any ARPA, but in a year or two or three, that might change, maybe even a month, it could change. But we'll continue to have conversations with the school administration and ensure that they're, that they have the tools they need and the funding they need to keep moving forward.
Thank you.
Question, question, Kevin. What kind of dollar volume, what are we talking about there that you have to expend by the end of the year?
So this year, there's no limitations or requirements. By the end of the three years that we have to have the monies, if either spent or earmarked for, there's $1.985 million, just a little bit of change on that, but that's, that's generally the number that we've been using.
And that's, and that's over three years?
That's over a three-year period, potentially more if we, we can. There's other things like, I should have mentioned this, but there's other things like infrastructure, like culverts. Culvert study potentially could be funded through this, and we've talked about that as a, as a comprehensive way to look at what our priorities are. The MVP identified some needs. This is, could be a next step as well. With that assessment as an example, if we do that assessment for $74,000, which is also on the capital plan, using ARPA money, there's some infrastructure money from the federal government that might become available to us now that we have the plan and the priorities. And with that plan, it could better situate us with a grant application for $500,000 to do a culvert or a million dollars to do a couple of culverts and a bridge. So the money can actually grow by making an investment of $74,000 on the study. Could turn into hundreds of thousands more from an outside source.
I think I see David Larson's hand up, do I?
Yeah, I just want, if I could, I just wanted to add to what Kevin said. The group wanted to make a formal presentation, you know, to the Select Board and get their feedback, get their involvement. We have a draft already done. Kevin's got it to look at, but is it any government project? It's complicated, and I think getting some background for the Select Board to know the process. getting some background for the select board to know the process and also some of the limitations and liabilities. There's some issues here we, we need to be careful of. Um, you need to make absolutely sure it's eligible or they can come back and audit you and claw back the funds in the future, things like that. So what Kevin said is correct. The group in general zeroed in on larger projects to reduce the amount of accounting. And ones where we're absolutely sure they're eligible, so we have no risk of a clawback. So we, that's some of the information we'd like to share with the select board. And it shouldn't, shouldn't take too long.
David, in, in order to get their assurance, what does that mean? Do you have to get something in writing? Do you have to get a proposal approved? What?
That's the pro- that's the problem, Cam, with the CARES Act. You know, they would pre-approve it before you spent money. Here, the town has gone a number of times and they give you a, they won't, they won't commit. Which makes it a gray area. And there, there's a little unease on everybody's part. There's some other options here though. And I'll save it for the presentation. There's some other options here to absolutely minimize the risk and give us full flexibility to spend it on anything we want.
Right. Yeah. And that's
I was thinking of, you, you know, Kevin, some of the lost revenue, some of those options.
Yep.
We don't want to get started on it tonight because I can't do it justice, but maybe ten or fifteen minutes. You know, we could give a pretty good overview to the select board and get your thoughts on it and feedback. Because some of these proposed uses are strategic in nature, which I think falls right into the purview of the select board.
David, if
Go ahead, sorry.
I apologize. Go ahead.
No, it's all right. No, I was just thinking some of the downtown, you know, the revitalization, try to incentivize that. We had some ideas on that. I would love to get feedback from you guys on.
So Kevin, when do you think that presentation would be then? When are you guys coming back? If you said it's a couple of weeks?
So we'd, um, I, I think it was a, like I said, today was a target date to sort of open up the conversation and give an update because it's been some time since we last talked about the ARPA and we've done in TA updates, but this is opportunity to, in the work session, get a little more into the, into kind of a better starting point, if nothing else. I think, and, and Mr. Larson, you feel free, you know, we were targeting at one point, um, maybe the more formal coming in, in two weeks. Um, we were looking at maybe the, the beginning of the week, work session, um, which would have been the nineteenth, possibly on the twentieth, but with the time constraints on that date, um, that we talked about. It might be better suited if we push that out to a later meeting. If we have an extra meeting, for instance, the following week, that might be the place to do it. Or uh maybe even into early February if necessary. But, um, it's, it'll be, that'll be where we can really kind of get into the, into the weeds a little bit more. And I want to make sure we have enough time to, to cover it and do its justice.
You'd rather do a work session than a Monday, like the twenty-fourth?
I don't know, David, what do you think? I, I think it might be useful just because then the board has a chance to really ask questions and pull and tug at it. Um, because we won't be doing a formal vote at that time. It'll be more of an update um and discussion. Um, but I don't know that, I don't, Mr. Larson, you have a thought on that?
Either way, um, I'll be glad to do the base presentation. I developed one for the FinCom to keep them up to date as to what was going on. And I was planning to hopefully use that next Monday. Um, we can send it to the select board in advance. I think it's only about seven slides total. You know, try to keep it as concise as possible. Um, but it, there are some twists and turns to this. And I think it's important you guys know exactly an overview of what it is and give, give guidance and direction as to what, what you want to do.
Well, David, with regards to those twists and turns, I liked Kevin's approach of looking at other towns and, and seeing what had been approved. But my guess is that's a real general guidepost and it may not apply to us for any number of reasons. It doesn't, it doesn't sound like they play hard and fast with what's approved and what isn't. Am I hearing that right?
You're hearing it right. Some things, um, we can certainly classify as hundred percent eligible. There's no question about it. And then you start to get into some gray areas, um, which, you know, presents a risk to the town I don't think we want to take. We don't need to.
But you think there's a path we can take with one point nine million dollars where clawbacks will not be ever applied to that?
Correct.
Okay, great.
If you have that presentation already, Dave, and you're giving it to the FinCom on the tenth, it seems like if you could send it to us earlier and maybe we shoot for the twenty-fourth, just to get a general sense.
Sure, sure. I sent it to, um, to Kevin and Catherine, you know, just to make sure, just to check it, to make sure everything was accurate and complete. I know everybody's losing
Because the other working sessions are dedicated to the budget and Cam was just saying maybe February second is a, a conflict for him. So um, if we don't do it on the twenty-fourth, we're pushing it out a whole month.
The twenty-seventh fourth sounds good to me. Yeah, that's a
Yeah.
regular meeting.
We could put it on the agenda, absolutely. And I think that if only, if there's anything that we're going to get together, like I said, next week as an ARPA team, and we'll talk about that being a target date. And if there's any reason why we think it might be better suited just to bring confusion or some unknowns that we want to push down into February, we certainly can. Like we said, we're not rushing. We don't have a heart of an immediate deadline to uh, to use these funds. So, but we'll target the twenty-fourth. That sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, it's great because we know it's not cast in stone, but it just can start the discussion and let us kind of know what you're thinking and what some of those risks are. And since the FinCom would have been briefed already on the tenth, um, you know, are getting briefed two weeks after that seems, you know, a good thing to do.
Just one, one other piece to Mr. Brown's question. It was a great question about how do we know what uh is eligible? Um, there's a number of guides that we've received from uh the interim guidelines, for example, from November five of this year. They've updated a number of times uh thus far. And what we've done is, um, thus far, we've reached out to the congressman's office to discuss some of the items. We've reached out to our auditors. Uh, Powers and Sullivan, not as the consultant through MAPC, but as our auditor to ask some, some questions. Um, we've talked with the state delegation and, and their understanding. And so there's a number of places where we can, um, we talked to A and F, actually. I talked with a representative from, um, from the state at A and F as well. Um, you know, the biggest thing I keep hearing though is because there isn't a crystal clear, like this is eligible, this is eligible. Some are. But there's some that are sort of like a general category. The justification and, and backup information that we create associated with a project is what's going to be really critical um in the thoroughness. And I, I really want to tip my hat to Captain Gabriel um and Suleme's, who are really kind of focused in on the systems associated with the reporting. Um, request documents, what type of backup we think will be needed, because that's part of what the working group's working on right now is not only the projects and eligibility, but well, if we need to report on it, let's start putting together systems to make sure that we check all the boxes along the way as well.
Once again, what other towns have done, bleed from them or provide them with some experience of something we've put together.
Yeah. And I feel just for what it's worth, talking with other communities, you know, everyone's in a similar place. Um, but I think right now, the way we've set up our organization for this, similar to CARES, I feel really confident that we're we're doing it the right way. And, um, if anything, I think other communities have, have mimicked or, or looked to Topsfield for certain pieces of guidance and how they're going through their processes. So that's, that's kind of a reassuring um, little tidbit, I guess. Nothing else.
Um, I, I just, Kevin and David, I'm, I'm glad to see that you guys are into it to the extent that you are. I mean, we're talking about hell, almost two million dollars. So we're not talking about hay here, okay? Um, and, and I'm not going to stick my nose into that and trying to figure out what's eligible and what isn't. I'm going to depend on you guys to do that. David, I'm impressed with the fact that you've already gotten into it. You understand some of the twists and turns that are going to be involved. And um uh, I look forward to you guys keeping us up to date, uh, uh, recognizing that it's a work in process. Uh, and recognize that it's going to change as we go. But it would be interesting to see some of the, uh, the listing that you've got, Kevin, is the, the things that might apply and some things that might not apply. Uh, those kinds of things. So again, thank you and David. I appreciate your work, David especially. Um, seems like you're really on top of it and that makes me feel more comfortable than normal.
To give you an idea of how gray and evolving it is, the um regulations are called the interim final rules. It is evolving, but I, I have to compliment Catherine Gabriel. She really has done an outstanding job on the, on the technical details here, really has.
She's good.
Extremely good. And she keeps us, keeps us on, in line. I'll put it that way.
Well, David, I would echo what Boyd said. Thank you so much for um dedicating your time to this. You're a great person to be on this team.
No, thanks. It's, it's, it's been interesting. And I'd like to share that with the select board and get your feedback. I know the whole group would, because some of these items are judgmental, you know, strategic in nature. More than a single, they're not just a capital item, you'll see. And I think some of them are very interesting.
I love the ones where you mentioned that if we spend a certain amount of money, it could open it up for additional grants uh down the road. So, you know, multiplying that pool of two million sounds terrific.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. This, I'm ready as soon as Kevin and Catherine come back with the, any feedback on the presentation?
Thanks, David.
Questions for David?
I have a, going back to Kevin on your, early part of your discussion. The words are something like, in the case of CARES, we have time to clean up and make use of. Just could you once again try to say something about wh- where we are on the CARES? I thought it was essentially all buttoned up and it's not what it need to be, but we, you were way ahead of everybody, most others, and that we were all done. But so what, what is that? Did you say those words, clean up or?
Yeah, we, we, I don't know exactly how I worded it and I apologize, but in essence, what I, we finished that project, closed it out and then submitted all of our documents and backup to the state. Um, and so at this point, the CARES has, unless they come back with any questions or anything else for that matter, for all intents and purposes, the CARES has been completed.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on that, Kevin? Does that wrap it?
No, thank you for the support on this. And, um, it's, it's, it's a really great opportunity for the town of Topsfield. We're excited to be able to keep the project moving.
This, this is big. This is the biggest bag of money you've had to spend for a long time, Kevin.
Yeah, I know. And I, it's, it's said again, you know, if we can find ways to invest in some of the things now, like reports that allow us to down the road even find more funding to keep growing, which is exciting. So, keep it going.
That's great. Thank you, Kevin. Um, thank you to the whole team.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Anything else that you want to um mention before we adjourn?
Um, other than the bu- I mentioned at the top of the budget, that's been all hands on deck, um, a lot of our focus this week. And, um, like I said, our goal is to get it out by midnight tomorrow to you folks. Um, so, um, if there's any delay, because we want to get it right. Um, I'll certainly let you, you know, ahead of time if it's going to be, say, Friday morning instead, if there's one last thing we want to make sure. But, um, the intent is to have it to you by, by tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
And that, that'll be an Excel, it'll be an Excel file, of course, right?
It'll be the typical omnibus, um, with, with the back.
Okay. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Nah.
Could I get a second, ignoring Boyd?
That's a second.
Oh, that is a second. Okay. Uh, roll call, Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Kant?
Aye.
And Ms. Ramirez is aye, passing unanimously.